This meeting is called to order. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight to the March 11, 2013 Board of Education Meeting. We truly look forward to a good meeting tonight and certainly a lot of recognitions. And it's just so good to see such a large group of people here this evening. We're going to move along with the first item being the invocation. Dr. Carol Burns, the Associate Superintendent for Educational Program Services will do that for us, please.
May we pray. Our Father, we're thankful for the many blessings that you give to us, so many we could not possibly number them, but we thank you especially for the opportunity. We have to work with the boys and girls in this school system. It's an awesome task that we realize daily and quite often feel inadequate, but we know that you've taught us in your word that if we acknowledge you and seek your guidance that you will help us along the way. And we ask for that guidance now for the Board of Education and for all of us who work in the school system. We need it on a daily basis. Give us a bright and ambitious view of what we can accomplish when we work together. And most of all, we ask that you give us the dedication to love, to respect, and to encourage every child in this school system on a daily basis, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, and the young men who handed you the agenda today are going to be doing that. They are South Caldwell's Cadet Lieutenant Commander Jacob Lockhart, Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Tyler Henry, and Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Ryan Ops. Please stand.
Attention, salute, page. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. The Board has had this for some time to review. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
I'd like that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we also have minutes from the February 11, 2013, our regular Board meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes as presented?
I make the motion we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our honors and recognition. And I'm going to turn the program over at this point to Mrs. Libby Brown, the Community Services Director, and she will introduce the spotlight, and then we'll move forward to greet the others as well.
Thank you Chairman Pennell. You're going to be delighted tonight to see our student spotlight, a junior from South Caldwell High School. And I'm scanning the crowd. He is here. Okay, yes, he is right there. We have Travis Saint Bryce. So we have a clip of Travis. I had the privilege of going up to the school and interviewing Travis, and I'll think you'll see why in just a second as to why he is the Board of Education Student Spotlight.
Hey, my name is Travis Saint Bryce, a junior from Caldwell High School. Sixteen years old, and I really enjoy going to South Caldwell, going to school, all the classes are something that I can challenge myself, and all the teachers are willing to work, all the students are able to do what they want to do. I'm a part of our school Beta Club, our student council, and I'm very active in those. Recently came back from the state convention, the Beta Club that I helped organize, and had a really fun time. Our school was able to bring back seven awards. The state convention was a real nice thing to bring to our school. Our student council is doing very well, and working with the community. We just recently tried to put together a track bigger along our road, but was shut down by a rain in Port Hill. And I continue to do service projects with the student council as well. I'm in Boys' Health in our local community, and we work with that community in some service projects like caring for food. And I recently acquired my Eagle Scout with my troop, and I received that last year. I actually represented the school in our Poetry Out Loud competition and our Shakespearean Restoration Competition that were countywide, and I took first place in both competitions for our school, and the school is very proud and happy to win those competitions. I'm also on the school's wrestling team. I've been a part of the wrestling team for three years, wrestling with a couple guys from the senior class that haven't been able to beat from a wrestling position, but I continue to go to practice, and if one day I'll be able to beat them. Trying in the process of running track right now with my wrestling coach, and also running cross country with my student coach as well.
Travis is one of my media tech students, first year in. He is so very responsible. He comes in at seven o'clock in the morning, about the time that I'm in. He starts the computers, he helps kids check out books, he gets them started on tests that they need to take. I can always trust him to be responsible and do what I've asked him to do, and even more than I've asked him to do. I think that he has leadership qualities that are going to take him far in his career and into his future.
I think the biggest positive role model, the biggest help that I've helped here at Caldwell came from my wrestling coach, Coach Miller, which he retired left, and then Coach Smith, or Dusty as some people like to call him. He's been one of the biggest helps in my life, because I've had to work with him in wrestling, but he also, outside of wrestling, I've had to talk with him about a couple things. I've had to work with him, and he's just been someone that I really think he's easy to talk to and easy to get along with. And then Mr. Haas, my math teacher and Beta Club sponsor, has been another really big help in everything I've done here at South. He's been there, and he's helped me through Beta Club and the state convention that I ran at, and he's been someone that I can talk to and then understands what I'm trying to say, and he's also my math teacher, and had to deal with even more instead of working for math, and he just continues to help no matter what. I'd like to thank everyone at the school, the principal, all the teachers who've honored me. It's a great honor to be able to sit here and represent South Caldwell in Board of Education and be a student spotlight. Something I can't be so confident in, I'd like to thank everybody, and I'm glad that I got to give my Board of Education a broken house.
Travis, if you'll come forward, we're going to move down. We'd like to congratulate you. Travis, we have a certificate for you, and we'd like to take some pictures with you and congratulate you on your spotlight.
If you want to get right in the middle, yeah. Ready, one, two, three. Give me one more. One, two, three. Okay. We have the Education Center Art Gallery. So a lot of you are here for the Education Center Art Gallery to admire your children's work, and it should be admired because it's beautiful work displayed in the Education Center selected at the school level and brought forward to us. So the Board of Education is honored to recognize the beautiful and creative artwork on display this month and all the young artists who have made artistic contributions to the art gallery. As I call your name, please come forward, and you will have your picture taken with the Board of Education and get a nice certificate with the superintendent and the Board of Education. And here they are.
And Ms. McNulty will even take your picture.
Yes, right.
I hope you have a good day.
I do, I'm good. Okay. Yeah, I'll work with it. We're going to start with Kings Creek School, your school, Jenny. Jenny McNulty is principal, and Lonnie Higgs is the art teacher. So as I call your name, please come forward. Kim Gatlin, second grade. Lacey McPeak, second grade. And J.J. Townsend, fourth grade. Yeah. That's Kings Creek School. Saw Mills Elementary School. Robin D. Bernardi is principal, and Brad Wright is the art teacher at Saw Mills.
We're going to have a chance, we're going to have them all, two schools together, and we'll have everybody standing up here, so keep the cameras ready.
Abby Gregg is a fourth grader, and Parker Hetchens is kindergarten student, and Isabella Proctor is a kindergarten student. So we're going to let these two schools, here you go, Isabella, there you go.
Congratulations, Parker.
So we're going to let these two schools take pictures.
All right, our third act moment is coming. As soon as we get everybody situated. All right, boys, come on down here tomorrow, boys and girls. You stand in front of me, Abby. You stand in front of me. All right. Everybody looking, smiling? All right, woo, a lot of cameras. We will keep smiling as long as you're glad.
I want to keep smiling. Next, we have Wes Lenore Elementary School, and Felicia Simmons is the principal, and Melissa Gerursky is the art teacher. Shanaya Dula, fourth grade. Paco Gerardo Pedro, kindergarten student. And we also have Collettsville School here tonight, and Craig Styron is the principal. Elizabeth Harless, eighth grade. Maddie Philial, sixth grade. Colby Schumake, eighth grade. And Gamel Middle School. Chris Green is here, he's principal. Janet Roman is art teacher. Brittany Clark, eighth grade. Trinity Price, eighth grader. And Davin Thomas, eighth grader. And Chris, I'm not sure how many of your students are here tonight, I mean, Bill? Because I can go ahead and introduce them as well. Any of your students here tonight? Okay. We also have the seventh grade students at Hudson Middle School. They did a special project, you may see that in the hallway. It is called Invisible Children of Africa. And I'd like for you, as you leave, to read the paper, the laminated paper that's on those sculptures. It's very touching. The students made live-sized sculptures of themselves with clear packaging tape shaped in poses that reflected emotions of running away or pleading for help to bring awareness to the plight of child soldiers kidnapped in Uganda, Africa. And this project had personal meaning to Gage Pryke, who spent the first three weeks of the school year in Botswana, Africa, with his grandparents visiting an orphanage and a village that they helped to fund. Okay? So at this time, we have, from Hudson Middle School, we have Gage Pryke, Jake Benfield, Christian Puckett, and Isaiah Foster. And we have Bill Griffin here from Hudson Middle School, thank you, Bill. And Kelly Woody is the art teacher. So let's get all of these back in center here so we can get some photographs. This is our last group of students for artwork. Okay. Now we're going to turn our attention to the Beta Club. The high school competition was held recently for the North Carolina Beta Club Convention, and our high schools, our traditional high schools, and the Caldwell Early College High School brought home a few trophies, winning trophies, and first, second, and third place wins. Starting with Caldwell Early College High School. Second place in spelling, Anna White, fifth year. Second place in Spanish, Dolly Estevez, fifth year. Phyllis Lynn and Ingrid Link are Beta Club advisors. Think Phyllis is in Raleigh this evening, training, and Phyllis couldn't be here, so Ingrid Link is here from Caldwell Early College High School, and Candace Hagaman is principal. Then we have High Brighton High School. Courtney Peterson, eleventh grade, placed first in the poetry competition, and Ryan Bartolino, tenth grade, placed second in the music fine arts competition. Wendy Beard is the HHS Beta Club advisor, and David Caldwell is principal. Now we have South Caldwell High School. South Caldwell Spartans are now back-to-back statewide Beta Club Quiz Bowl champions. As 2013 state champions, South Caldwell now boasts of its six Beta Club Quiz Bowl championships since 2005. South Caldwell's team members include four returning players. Seniors Ryan Ops, Jonah Ferris, Isaac Pearson, and junior David Marhow. If you'd like to come forward, young men? Okay? And the Quiz Bowl team will compete at the 33rd National Beta Club Convention in Mobile, Alabama this June. I think there's just one that says Quiz Bowl Champions, and the others are...
Let me see what I have here.
Yeah, and then there's... Well, just stay up there, fellas, because they also were winners of some other categories. Jonah Ferris Senior also finished first in the English competition, and David Morrow Junior placed second in Social Studies. Four other South Caldwell High School students received awards. Meredith Hall Senior was first in mathematics. Sophomore Carrie Burgess was first in spelling. Senior Jenna LaBrosse was third in fine arts, and junior Julia Folic placed third in the special talent competition for her beautiful solo dance interpretation of Love Never Fails. South Caldwell's seven total awards are the second highest in school history, and the five first-place wins sets a new school record. So we're very proud of Jonathan Haas, so Jonathan, you need to come forward. Okay? He is the South Caldwell High School Beta Club advisor, does an excellent job at that. And Mike Peak is principal, and Mike's here tonight. So we're very pleased and proud of our Beta Club winners at the state level, something to be...
And you do not have a certificate, we will give you one.
You know, March is Music in Our Schools Month, so we're going to get started with this because we'll have more recognitions in April for music. But the North Carolina Music Educators Association, high school choral music performance adjudication, superior performance for small ensemble and solo. So we have High Brighton High School Concert Choir received a superior rating, and the director, Alyssa Lowe, is at the school actually registering eighth graders tonight, so she couldn't be here. South Caldwell High School Honors Ensemble received a superior rating in grade six, and the Beginning Chorus received a superior rating in grade three. Alice Robson is actually at another competition. Oh, she's here! Good, come on, Allison Robson, okay? And she had two solists receive, Jared Wine Barger and Rebecca Storey, and they have received, so, yes, so we... Very good, so we're... Yes.
Congratulations.
And thank you, and I know, and I don't, I didn't see one in there for him. And we also have the Wes Caldwell High School Chorus. They received a superior rating, and Hunter Suits, very proud chorus director, is Hunter here tonight?
Hey.
Now we'd like to recognize two of our employees in the school district. Biomedical Project Lead the Way Master Teacher Appointment, Connie Root, biomedical science PLTW teacher at Caldwell Career Center Middle College. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about Connie. She's an outstanding teacher. Connie Root, Project Lead the Way biomedical science teacher at Caldwell Career Center Middle College, has been appointed as a National Master Teacher Apprentice for next school year, 2013-2014. The PLTW Professional Development Team indicated that Root was chosen based on her commitment to excellence and her understanding of the principles of the biomedical sciences. Root is given the opportunity to become a master teacher after her apprenticeship is completed, and Brian Sutter, principal, is here tonight to support her, so we're very proud of Connie Root.
All right, Connie.
Congratulations. And we have a principal we'd like to recognize tonight, if Mr. Gwen Root from Dudley Shoals Elementary would come forward. He is the 2013 North Carolina DARE Officers Association Educator of the Year. An award that is presented statewide at their annual conference. The DARE program is a drug prevention program taught to fifth-grade students throughout the school district. Root began teaching at Wes Lenore in 1998 and served as interim principal at the school until 2004. He was an assistant principal at South Caldwell High School from 2004 to 2008, and principal at Horizons Elementary from 2008 to 2011. He currently serves as the Dudley Shoals Elementary Principal. You've been on the fast track, huh? And we are so proud of you, and congratulations. I think this is the first one I can remember, very long time, that we've had an educator of the year through the DARE program, so congratulations to Mr. Gwen Root. Some of those were art students.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Because as women back up, I know some of you may need to leave, or you two may be doing homework, or maybe...
Reading.
...or readings. Thank you for being here.
I'm going to go down there for you to recognize me. I'm going to read this proclamation for the social worker. Okay.
And then just to you.
Okay.
All right, that means we have plenty of seats up front. The rest of you can move on up front.
Oh, so thank you for approving my graduation document. The survey, that's me.
Oh, good. How's it going? Have you started yet?
Yes, I have the surveys back. I'm getting ready to start doing it.
Well, let me know, and maybe I'll have you come in. I want to sit in on your project judge.
Okay.
All right, tell your teacher, I want to do that now, okay? All right, good luck.
Her next item on the agenda is public comment and we have not received any by 4:30 this afternoon, so we're going to move on with our agenda. This time, I'd like to turn the program over to our superintendent, Dr. Steve Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public. Our next item is in recognition of our social workers and our guidance counselors in the state of North Carolina or in the county of Caldwell. The governor of North Carolina has issued a proclamation, and I would like to read that to you, "In honor of School Social Worker Week." We'll have to get on him about Guidance Counselor Week. We'll, we'll, we'll talk with the governor about that, but this is his, his executive order. "Social Worker Work Week," I'm sorry, "School Social Work Week 2013 by the Governor of the State of North Carolina, A Proclamation. Whereas students with special needs and concerns require assistance that encourages the maximum development of their potential and whereas social, school social workers are a vital part of educating our children and preparing them for the future and whereas school social workers serve as liaison between the home, school, and community. Among their many duties, school social workers encourage, encourage parents to take, parents to take active roles in the education of their children, interpret and assess specific needs of exceptional children, and work closely with the local and state agencies to meet the needs of children and their families. And whereas the state of North Carolina is proud to recognize the importance of social work in our schools and the critical role that school social workers play in helping to mold and educate North Carolina's children. Now therefore, I, Pat McCory, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 3rd through the 9th, last week, 2013, as School Social Worker Week in North Carolina and commend its observation to all citizens. In witness thereof, he said, I have therefore set my hand and affixed the great seal of the state of North Carolina at the Capitol in Raleigh on this, the fifth day of March in the year of our Lord, 2013, and of the independence of the United States of America. It's 237." So, I'd like to call Jill Ford to introduce our social workers and guidance counselors who are here and maybe speak to how much they do in our public school system and how invaluable they are to what they, what, what we do every day with our children.
Mr. Chairman, esteemed board members, and Dr. Stone, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes of your agenda this evening so that we might highlight some of the duties and responsibilities of our school counselors and our school social workers. As Dr. Stone has already mentioned, School Counselor Week was the first week of February and last week was School Social Worker Week. As a district, we have 15 licensed school social workers. 14 of them are in the Student Services Department and one is in our Exceptional Children's Program. We also have two communities and school social workers that are employed by the Department of Social Services who serve middle and high school students referred to the CIS program. We have approximately 38 licensed school counselors in our district as well. With our, with our CIS program, we do work in concert in our dropout prevention efforts. I would like, at this time, for our school counselors first to stand, those that are here today. If you have brought family members with you, they can stand as well.
Jill, introduce and let them tell us what school setting they're in in case we don't, can't put name with the face.
Uh, this is Rhonda Irvin. She's at Caldwell.
I was going to let them do it.
Okay, that's great. Well, good, because I was afraid I might forget a name or something. Go ahead.
Again, I'm Rhonda Irvin. I'm at Caldwell. Maybe. I'm with the Columbia University. I'm with the Columbia Elementary School. I'm Nancy Green. I'm Esther Wakefield, West Caldwell High School. While finding all hearts in this world.
Okay, thank you for that. And now, if our school social workers and our CIS social workers would stand, and your family members, if they like? We'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves as well.
Gwen Laws, I'm a school social worker and I'm an old grade annual business.
I'm Kim Dennis, I'm a school social worker for, um, Little and Middle School where a child is down with the school.
I'm Kelly Sterling, I'm a school social worker for Donville Elementary School, West the only one in the county.
I'm Ashlyn McPhee, I'm a school social worker at West Caldwell High School and I'm a child with a school.
I'm Colin Dollar, I'm a senior social worker for West Caldwell High School, High Brighton High School, and Little School.
And I'm John White, I'm a school program also at South Caldwell, up to middle, random middle, and, and...
I'm Kelly Matthews, I'm a school social worker at Able Elementary School with child family support.
I'm Laura, I'm a school social worker. That's what I mean, I'm a student.
Okay, thank you so much. All of you who are here, I would also like to ask my lead counselor and my lead social worker to stand just again to make sure everybody knows who they are, and that's Gwen Laws is, is our lead social worker and Laura Parnell is our lead, uh, school counselor. They go the extra mile in coordinating our monthly professional development for all of the disciplines and they've taken responsibilities for mentoring and orientation of our new staff. They set agendas for the monthly meetings and they facilitate communication among all of our department members. I couldn't do without them. They have also been very supportive of my efforts to try to have a collaborative interdisciplinary teams in all of our schools. This year again, Laura has taken a lead in connecting with our legislators and Gwen has played a key role in coordinating services for our increasing numbers of homeless use. We have 130 at the moment and the school's year's not over. And also in advancing the development of tools to address our, our bullying prevention program. So, I really do appreciate so much what all of you do and couldn't, couldn't manage without their leadership roles. While education and training for both professions does include specific training in their mental health counseling and interventions, the two positions are different in a number of ways and I've often asked that. So, I wanted to kind of point out a few of the differences. The school counselors are responsible for academic and career advising for all students. So, they, they basically work with every student in their building. Whereas school social workers generally work with an identified percentage of the population of students who may need advocacy, resources, and interventions that extend beyond the school building. Often, students are referred to social workers by the school counselors when multiple complex needs dictate case management, frequent family contact, and numerous meetings with community agencies. Counselors provide the bulk of their interventions within the walls of the school building, whereas much of the school social workers' efforts are directed in the home and the community. Of this year, school counselors have focused on, among many things, beginning to implement a comprehensive school counseling program, learning about the new guidance essential standards to prepare to facilitate those next year, developing a framework for implementing professional learning communities within their discipline, school, and district, providing responsive services which include individual and group counseling, and consultation with support staff, teachers, and families, and learn the revised professional standards for the new evaluation tool that's going to be implemented next year, and they are participating in the validation study of that instrument, providing advocacy for equitable access to academic rigor for all students, and reviewing data systems to guide the development and evaluation of preventive and intervention practice and program outcomes. This year, our school social workers have been focusing on also implementing a comprehensive, a comprehensive school social work program to address the social, legal, economic, physical, and mental health needs of individual students, reviewing the current systems of data collection and case management to design more effective ways to capture and report student outcomes, to emphasize their roles as bridge builders and liaisons between the home, school, and community, conduct continuous reviews of risks and needs within the community, identify gaps in service, and remove barriers to access, participate in community collaboration and the development of services and resources, learn the revised professional standards for the new evaluation tool, and participate in the validation study. That tool is also being revised this year, emphasize school attendance as an integral part of academic success through collaboration with the judicial system when school-based interventions have been exhausted. Social workers and counselors have partnered in a number of activities this year as well, including Christmas assistance, implementation of our YTR curriculum, and the district-wide staff development for personnel on our anti-bullying campaign. Together, they are also currently working on Baskets of Hope fundraiser to generate emergency assistance resources for our students and families. Removing the barriers to learning and access to services is a focus for all students and personnel. It really takes all of us working together to teach the whole child. And I am very grateful to the board, Dr. Stone, and my supervisor, Dr. Johnson, for your unwavering support and recognition of the importance of student support services and the education of our students. Thank you.
And Jill, I can, I can tell you, I got tired just from, from all the stuff we're doing on that list. But I, I know that, I know it is, but what the, what I want to say for the district's perspective too, for those of you who are here, we do recognize that you play a vital role in our children being successful, for them not dropping out of school, for them going to, and connecting them to other resources in the community and their parents and their families. So, we know that, that you play a vital role in what we do in public education and so hopefully not just the month of March or a week in March. I hope we appreciate you and show that appreciation to you all the time because you really do well deserve it. And so, we thank you very much for what you do and congratulations on your week. Oh, and I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, and, and I really hate to do this because I feel like I'm going to empty the room, but, but if you all have other things you need to do, I recognize that and so we, we know you're busy and we know you've spent a, a long day in our school, so if you feel the need to leave, feel, feel free to do that. And thank you again. Oh, I'm sorry. For board action, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I call your attention to Exhibit Two, which is the proposed revision to the Board Policy Manual, and these are up for one-month comment period. The first set is the 3,000 series. The 3,000 series basically has to do with curriculum and I can assure you, Dr. Carol Burns and the members of our EPS department have had a chance to look at those policies and so we would like to put them out there and make many suggestions and changes. Most of it grammatical, right Carol, comma here, comma there, all those. And, and but, but there also have been some major changes that we want to call your attention to on the exhibit you have from Christine, but we would like to put those out for one month comment period, the 3,000 series on curriculum and instruction.
Do I hear a motion that we place the 3,000 series educational program and submit it for a one month, uh, one month comment period?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we put the 3,000 series educational program on a one-month comment period.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 1B is the board policy, uh, particular board policy 4,700. When we did the 4,000 series way back a couple of months ago, this is one of the policies that was, that was not in that series and so we caught that and so this is the first reading for student records, 4,700. You can see from, this is a draft copy from the lawyer's office and you can see that there's only one slight change to 4,700, but we would like to put that out there for one month comment period and then we'll have the 4,000 series completed.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we place the board policy 4,700 on student records for a one-month comment period?
Mr. Chairman, I move that board policy 4,700 student records be placed on a one-month comment period.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any comments, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item V2 is a resolution which I would like to read so it can go on the record and for those who are watching it, that we're asking the board to approve. This comes by way of the North Carolina School Boards Association. They're urging the 115, the 115 school districts to adopt this. And then let me read the resolution and speak briefly to why I would recommend that the board approve it. This is a resolution in opposition to school property transfer from the local school boards to the county commissioners. Whereas North Carolina general statute describes the powers of the general control and supervision of school systems are to be vested in the local board of education and not the county commissioners. And whereas public school placement, design, and maintenance are integral components of the control and supervision authority that the local boards of education have been statutorily assigned. And whereas to maximize efficiency and maintain supervisory powers, local boards of education must continue to control the basic powers of school property ownership. And whereas as duly elected officials, local school board members must continue to discharge their duties and responsibilities for the citizens of North Carolina. Now be, there, now therefore be it resolved, the Caldwell County Board of Education, for the reasons noted herein noted, opposes any proposed legislation that would authorize counties to assume control of school property and respectfully requests that the North Carolina General Assembly oppose any such legislation during its 2013 session on the 11th day of March. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and those in the audience, there was some, there's a possibility of some legislation being introduced that would transfer control of all school property, school buildings, everything, all the physical plant that we own currently to the local county commissioners. And by law, you know, if the General Assembly can do that, because the local boards of educations are not in the North Carolina Constitution, they are an act of the North Carolina General Assembly. So, there are no constitutional protections, there are no constitutional responsibilities. So, the General Assembly sets those for the local boards of education. And because of a fight between the board of education and the county commissioners in Wake County, it is spilling over to those of us in other counties. And so, what this is just clearly, and I've talked with our county commissioners or a number of them, and they have no interest, the ones I've talked to, have no interest in assuming our property or, or our debt or our funding sources to pay for property or our maintenance departments. So, I don't think it'll be a problem here, but in going along with the North Carolina School Boards Association, I am recommending that we approve this. So, we can send a message to Raleigh that the current method of an elected school board works. The school board knows what kind of buildings they have or need. The school board knows what kinds, or through its administration, we know where improvements need to be made. We know what kind of things need to be done to that classroom and so we believe that power should result, should rest with the board of education and not the county commissioners. We have a great relationship with our county commissioners and this is in no way anything about them. This is really about a statewide move to, to kind of make sure that the duties between the school boards and the county commissioners stay clearly defined. I mean, you are elected by the citizens of this county to set education policy, to help us direct where we want to build buildings, how we use monies that would come from the state to what we need to build. And so, that's something that, that we feel like this legislation could be a threat to. So, I'm recommending that we approve the resolution, send it on to our North Carolina School Boards Association as well as our members of the North Carolina General Assembly. And I, I don't know if there are any questions or discussions, but I'll be glad to answer anything I could.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the resolution in opposition to school property transfer from local school boards to county commissioners? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution in opposition to school property transfer from local school boards to county commissioners.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second motion.
Okay. Now, do we have any questions or anything, Dr. Stone?
Are most of the 115 opposed now, also?
Oh, yes. From what we heard from the superintendent's gathering, and I can't speak for the school boards and maybe some of you may have some connection with the School Boards Association, but I think all 115 are ready and eager because it really is kind of muddying the waters of what school boards do and what county commissioners. And the county commissioners already run a number of departments and so I would assume that most counties don't even want that responsibility. So, all school districts I'm aware of are in opposition to it, basically to just keep the lines clear. This is kind of what we're responsible for, this is what you're elected for. So, you know, the answer, short answer is yes. All school districts, I think, will be opposed to it.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may speak, you, you made the comment, Dr. Stone, that we have a great relationship with our commissioners, we work well with them, and we appreciate that kind of relationship. It would only take something like this to really destroy that relationship, to endanger the relationship that we have. the relationship that we have, when you start talking about turf, so to speak. And we certainly would be hurt as a school system in that kind of situation with our commissioners and in running our schools efficiently.
I would just reiterate what Dr. Stone said, too. I've spoken directly with the chair of the county commissioners, and they have no desire at all to assume property transfer from Caldwell County schools. So, like Dr. Stone said, I don't think it's gonna be an issue with them, but I do think it's a positive thing that we put this resolution out there.
Mm-hmm.
And I do want to say, too, I will have a personal communication with the county commissioners, explain it, so they don't think that we're, you know, we're getting grabby or power hungry or something, but I'll have a personal conversation with this county manager and ask to be on their agenda to address the resolution and why we feel like we do.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll pass that along to the General Assembly and to the county. Item Three, I get to do, Jeff is at a conference, and so, I told him I would cover the calendars for him. So, I don't know, but we do have some public comment about the calendars, and what you have in front of you are two calendars. The first calendar, Exhibit Four, the first calendar is for the traditional schools, all 24 of them. The first day of school is August 26th, the last day is June 12th, mandated by state law. Love to tell the public we had some other options, but we really don't, we do not qualify for a waiver this year, so that's the calendar. The second calendar is for the innovative high schools, and that is the middle college and the early college, and that calendar starts for students on August the 7th and ends on May the 22nd. It is built loosely around the community college calendar, which is vital to those two programs. The public comment we received, and we have received three, one is a concern about weather makeup days, whether or not we can use some of those ER days for report cards and use the OP days as the snow makeup day. The answer to that is that we could, but remember, we are still mandating by the state the number of days or hours, and so, that would work. Didn't like Saturday school. The other calendar comment is that spring break is too late in the year, and we build our spring break around Easter, and they had requested that we look at moving it to the 1st of April and have Good Friday still off. Doesn't like Saturday school, feels like there'd be low attendance, and it would not be sound instructionally, and recommended that we look at using Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday as a school day. The other calendar suggestion was to move the Common Core Day in August, they felt like that, to move it to February, they felt like that there may be a need, since we only have four of those days built into the beginning of the school year, maybe a need for teachers to be in their classroom a little bit more, was the basic suggestion there. I mean, there are a couple of other things, but that was to move that Common Core Day. These are possibly some good suggestions, but I do know that the purpose of the Common Core Day is for us to really do some intensive training, so we could implement that at the beginning of the school year, so I would like to recommend that we continue the Common Core Day where it is. As far as moving the ER days, we really can't do that, we've still gotta make the 180 days. And we have traditionally in this district maintained that relationship between spring break and Easter, and I don't know if that's something you all would like to in the future look at, but it's kind of become an expectation in this community that people plan around that, so my recommendation is that we go with the current calendars as presented, acknowledging that we did receive some public feedback, mostly from staff. The calendars have been out there probably for 60 days, for talked about in schools and everywhere else, that we could do that, but I'd like to recommend that we approve the calendars, make them publicly, widely publicly distributed, so people can go ahead and start making those expensive airplane plans that I'll hear about if I mess up one of their days or something. I do want to call attention to the board, the bullets at the bottom of both calendars. Again, the emphasis on an early release day for Christmas and the last day of school for everyone but high school students, is just an understood that that's a three-hour early release. And the last bullet is that because we have no place to put makeup days in this calendar unless we begin to take holidays, spring break and those kinds of things, that we utilize the Saturday option as much as, I mean, luckily, we kind of, I hope we're done with it this year, but it is an option for us to get those days without messing up traditional days that people really do plan around. And once this calendar is public, people will start making their plans around the calendar, so. And Saturday school is not a great option, and yes, we'll have poor attendance, but we'll have poor attendance on any makeup day that we put into the calendar.
Well, in regard to the Easter holiday, we, I mean, Easter's fairly early this year, and I don't know if you know the formula for it.
Something about the stars, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's the first Sunday after the first full moon after the spring equinox, which is March 21st, and so, it's, if you ever need to figure that out, see when the moon's gonna be full, so it's one of those things that is gonna be different every single year, and it's probably simpler to just keep with the way that we've been doing it, rather than trying to change it around, you know, on the years that it happens to be really early or really late or something like that, so.
And I'm not sure if businesses still take off Easter Monday? That used to be the big tradition in North Carolina, was Easter Monday versus Good Friday?
Yeah. I don't know. I'm not sure.
Probably the banks would.
But could you say, Dr. Stone, that of all those concerns that we received, public comment, that we did not have any significant numbers, more than just one or two?
Three.
Three was the largest number?
Three who chose to, actually.
The largest number for any one issue?
No, just three total.
But only one comment per issue?
Saturday school got two.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we approve the calendars and go ahead and publish them.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the calendars as they are presented, as has been on the table for the last 30 days, that being the traditional calendar, the Career Center calendar, and also the early college calendar? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the calendars for 2013, 2014, the Career Center, Middle College, Caldwell Early College, and the traditional calendars proposed be approved as presented.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additional comments, any additional questions?
180 days, that's been dropped, right? We're back down to 180.
We are, yes. It's not 185-day calendar, it's 180-day calendar.
And knowing this is not an easy process, and it's kind of pretty well tied into certain days anyway, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Stone. Next on the agenda is the Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Trish Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Stone, I have three items for your attention this evening, beginning with Exhibit Five, includes usual and customary personnel items for your information only. Exhibit Six includes usual and customary items that require action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented to you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as have been presented.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Exhibit Seven, student transfers for the month, we received 13 requests. All 13 are recommended for approval, and I guess I need to preface that by saying that's because they're already enrolled in the school. Our policy is, once they're enrolled in the school, if they should move during the school year, they're granted permission to continue within that school, at least for that school year, so all of these have moved within the school year. All 13 meet requirements and are recommended for approval. If approved this evening, that brings our total transfer request approvals for the year to 580. I respectfully recommend approval of the transfer request.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the 2012, 2013 student transfers as you have had in your agenda and has been presented to you?
I move we approve the student transfers for March as presented.
Do I hear a second? Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we have Finance Director, Carter Miller, that's gonna be the responsibility of Dr. Stone this evening.
And so, please don't have any questions, please. I'm very good at spending money, not as well as Carl about saving it, but we do quite well here. So, Carl had to be at a conference, and I know as a part of that, their meeting to talk about allotments for next year, they're talking about where funding's gonna come from, so Carl really needed to be there, so I told her I would cover. But we have some budget amendments to the state, local current expense, and federal expense fund, so I'll start with the first one. The first, Exhibit 10, or Amendment Number 10, is to add to the state fund for substitute reimbursement and transportation, $64,568. Budget Amendment 11 is to the local current expense fund, and that is to increase, and both of these are increases, by the way, all three of them, in a grant for the Patterson Science Center, some additional monies from the Patterson Store, and some fund balance from EC, the Medicaid program, to the tune of $184,905 to the good. Budget Amendment 12 is to the federal grants fund, and this is an addition of only $3,340, but addition, and it's a carryover of our CTE program funds and some adjustments. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, hopefully without question, I'd like to recommend these budget amendments for approval.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments to the state public school fund, the local current expense fund, as well as the federal grants fund?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the budget amendments to the state public school fund, the local current expense fund, and federal grants fund be approved as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Surely somebody has a question.
All right, move on, Darrell, move on, move on, move on, time, watch your time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Stone. At this time, I would like to give our news reporter from the news topic an opportunity to stand up and introduce yourself. We're glad you're here with us, so if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Megan. I'm the new education reporter at these.
Thank you, welcome.
Megan, come on now, you can do better. Appalachian State University, you're a journalism major, you're, I'm sorry, pub, okay. You're taking currently, I think you have two, am I correct, two courses, and you're still working on that, but the news topic is working with you on that, so you'll be joining us from now on every time we meet, right? Well, welcome. Where's your home?
Columbia, South Carolina.
Well, you'll love it from Illinois.
Thank you, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, the board had an opportunity to go to Raleigh, I'm going to open it up for discussion now. Tim, if you wanna start.
I'll be glad to. Like Darrell said, we had the opportunity on February 26th to all pile into one of the school vans, and Mr. Knight was gracious enough to drive us all down there.
Because I have my school bus license, yeah, and white school.
Excellent driver.
Did a great job because of the weather that day. That was the day when it was pouring rain here, and also pouring rain.
Three-hour delay, at least.
Three-hour delay here.
Rained all the way down and most of the way back.
Right, but we didn't delay our trip, we left right on time. Actually, we met Dr. Stone, who was already down there at a conference. The purpose of the trip was to sit down and meet with our legislators, our representatives there in Raleigh. We started off with meeting with Senator Dan Suchek. He met with us around noon, a little bit after noon, in his office, and we started out, Dr. Hall actually started out talking about vouchers and tax credits and the importance of making sure that the public schools were protected, and about our concerns about those. Senator Suchek was actually very gracious in the time that he had for us, and I also thought he had some thoughtful questions, too, in response to us. He did ask some questions about those tax credits, Dr. Hall and Mrs. Darcy responded to that, also Mr. Knight. And then, our chairman, Mr. Pennell, shared about some of the calendar issues, which we just discussed just a few minutes ago, about how we feel the importance of letting local boards of education make the call on their own local calendar. So, we talked a little bit about calendar flexibility. From his viewpoint, it didn't feel like anything was gonna come through the pipe this year, but we'll continue to go back for that. Then, Mrs. Darcy shared a little bit about budgetary issues, about how it would affect our county specifically, some of the cuts, and not only some of the cuts, but she also shared a little bit about the discretionary reduction, whether you know it or not, but it's $3.8 million in 2012, 2013. We talked a little bit about our needs of technology, about remediation for reading, about unfunded mandates. Chairman Pennell also shared some concerns about the new way of a school performance grading that's coming out. And then, we took just a few minutes after that, as we were in the legislative building, and kind of went around and see, you know, just trying to see who we could meet and see and talk with. We did take the opportunity to meet with Senator Brunzetter, who's from Yadkin and Forsyth County. He was gracious, he was in caucus. In fact, what had happened is before we had got there, is that a caucus was called, and so, some of the representatives were there in that caucus. In fact, our representative of the House of Representatives, Edgar Starnes, was in caucus. He did come out for a picture, for a photo op, so. And then, we had the opportunity, I had never done this before, we had an opportunity to actually go down and sit in the session of the House of Representatives, and that was a neat thing until Ms. Coffee failed. But they did take care of her, there was a nurse and a doctor on duty that day, and they took care of her, and she wasn't hurt too drastically, but it was a good trip, despite the weather, and one in which I feel like our presence said a lot. One of the things that I heard, I remember, is that once in a while, they will have Board of Education members come down, but not an entire Board of Education, the entire board, like we did. And I think that made a statement for Caldwell County. And so, Darrell, I'll just open it up and let others.
Any other comments?
Well, one thing, when we talked to Senator Suchek, he has a real interest in school technology, and as a matter of fact, I think since we were there, a bill has actually been introduced, and you've probably seen it, about rerouting some of lottery money towards school technology, and I believe his name is on that bill, but it's something he's very interested in, and we know that that's an important issue to keep our technology current and, you know, as good as we can get it with the money that we have. The other thing, and sometimes you just have to bite your tongue and not say what you want to say, but one of the things that always occurs to me is why they have the interest in giving so much flexibility to charter schools, and they won't even let us set our own calendar, for goodness sakes? I do bite my tongue, I didn't say it, but it's something that, if it's good enough for them, why is it not good enough for our public school system, which serves the vast majority of children within our state? That's my opinion for what it's worth.
I forgot to mention, too, I don't know, someone may mention, I forgot to mention, too, we also took the opportunity to go over to DPI, their headquarters there, and go into the state superintendent's office, she wasn't there, but the staff there was very gracious in taking us around and giving us a tour of the state boardroom, and that was a good opportunity.
Rebecca Garland spent about 30, 40 minutes with us, and Angela as well, were a good opportunity.
One more thing about Suchek, we always heard he was for charter schools, I thought he was, but his children do attend public schools in Caldwell County, so that was encouraging.
We can't say that we definitely made a difference, but we can definitely say that we've tried, that we tried to make an impression, so let them realize that we weren't just satisfied with anything that happens, that we feel that we know what's best for our district and our students, and we did express our concerns, and I'm glad that as a board, as a full board, we were able to do that.
And the opportunity is there, I mean, for the first time, I don't know if it's the first time ever, but for one of the first times that I can remember, we have a majority leader in the House, which is from Caldwell County. So, we have a voice, and hopefully, you know, that voice is being able to be a presence there, you know, that's my hope. there, you know, that's my hope.
Well, I agree, Dr. Hall, that it was indeed good that the entire Board was able to be there, and I think they, you know, the ones we were able to talk to, they were impressed that the entire Board showed up. I think the Department of Public Instruction, the people we talked to, Mrs. Garland, and the others that we met there, they were also impressed that the entire Board showed up. I mean, they, just like Tim indicated, they meet school board members from time to time, but never an entire Board together. So, it was a good experience, it was an interesting day, and the fact that it was raining all the way down and back, and kind of a bumpy ride on that van, but nonetheless, Mr. Knight, you did a great job driving us down there.
And the other positive is, we got to stop on the way back, right?
Yes.
I knew you were.
Barbecue supper.
We now have converts to Eastern North Carolina barbecue. Okay. Any other comments about that? Okay, as you're quite aware, we have had a vacancy on the Board for some time, and the Board has received applications from some very excellent candidates, and we intend to diligently move forward in order to fill the vacant Board seat, as the Board has the opportunity to review each of these candidates. So, we will be in the process of doing that. Next is the superintendent's report.
I don't have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Our announcements, Snow Make Up Day will be March 15th, which will be Friday, and that will be an early release day.
Yes.
And that will cover the day that we missed on January the 18th. Our next meeting as a Board will be the Work Session, which will be on March the 25th, 2013, at West Caldwell High School, and that will be followed by the Community Board Meeting at 6 o'clock there in the theater at West Caldwell High School. Any other announcements, or any other comments?
Just a real quick little correction, that Board Work Session starts at 4 o'clock versus 3 o'clock.
Okay.
I just.
All right. Anything else? Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Good evening, thank you for being here today.